Good evening, everyone. Tonight is Tuesday, May 7th, 2019. I'd like to call the Fitchburg City Council to order. Please be advised that FATV is conducting audio and video recording of this meeting for public broadcast. I would ask that anyone else who is in the audience this evening to please identify themselves for the record now by standing and stating their name and address. Again, this is only for folks who wish to video or audio record. Is there any such person in the audience? Seeing none. Counselor Zarella, would you please lead us in the salute to the flag?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Clerk, would you please conduct the roll call?
President Kuschmerich.
Present.
Counselor Boishman.
Here.
Counselor Clark.
Here.
Counselor Deena Tally.
Here.
Counselor Donnelly.
Here.
Counselor Fleming.
Here.
Counselor Green.
Here.
Counselor Caddy.
Here.
Counselor Squalia.
Present.
Counselor Walsh.
Here.
And Counselor Zarella.
Here.
Counselors, tonight we'll conduct two public forums. This first public forum is only for the Appointments Committee and the two communications from His Honor, the Mayor, concerning the promotions for the fire depart— yeah, for the fire department. So I would ask that anyone who is here in the audience, who is here to address those items pertaining only to the promotions and the appointment of the firefighter, to please come forward and identify yourself by name and address for the record. Seeing none. We'll now hear a report from the Appointments Committee, which met earlier this evening and took up the following matter: New appointment, full-time firefighter to fill the vacancy created by Captain Brian Murchy, and that is Mr. Troy R. Worthley. We also have two communications from His Honor, the Mayor. The first, Lieutenant Patrick J. Roy to permanent— to permanent fire captain, and second firefighter Andrew R. Doughty to permanent fire lieutenant. Chief Roy.
Counselors, thank you very much. Another good night for our department. I'd like to take a moment to just start off and recognize Captain Brian Murchy. He's here with us tonight. Brian, if you could just put your hand up. Counselors, some of you know, Brian spent 32 years with our department. He was a very dedicated fire officer, captain on Group Three. In addition to his firefighting duties, he also was in charge of all our equipment purchases and how our equipment— what we buy, when we buy it. He also was the secretary-chancellor of the Firefighters Union and ran the Community Betterment Fund for the city for a number of years, for the department, that donated a lot of money to a lot of good causes in the city. So, Brian, we wish you the best in your retirement. Our first appointment tonight is Troy Worthley. Troy's a graduate of the North Central Chatter School in Fitchburg. He served in the U.S. Marine Corps from 2013 to 2018, specializing in fire control. He's a certified EMT and currently is working in the EMS field in the area. He's our top candidate on the Civil Service list, and we believe he's a very good prospect for our department.
I'd ask for a motion to accept the Appointments Committee report.
To accept.
Second.
I have a motion and second to accept the Appointments Committee report. Speaking on the motion, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? It is unanimous. Motion carries.
Our second appointment tonight is firefighter Andrew Doughty. Andrew is a graduate of Fitchburg High School, class of 2007. He has a fire science degree from Anna Maria College, second-generation firefighter. His dad, Randy Doughty, is here tonight. Randy's been with us over 30 years and is also a very dedicated firefighter. He's had many years in the EMS service before coming with us. He joined our department in December of 2015. He's the top scorer on the current fire lieutenant certification, and we believe Andrew's going to be a very dedicated lieutenant and officer for our department.
Second.
I have a motion and second to accept the communication of His Honor, the Mayor, to appoint Andrew R. Doughty to permanent fire lieutenant. Speaking on the motion, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? It is unanimous. Motion carries.
Counselors, our last appointment tonight is Patrick Roy, and as Counselor Deena Tally and a few others can attest, Patrick James Roy really didn't know what he wanted to do for a career in his lifetime.[316.02][316.02](Laughter) But we're pretty glad he settled on firefighting. PJ's a graduate of Fitchburg High, 1999. Has his fire science degree at Mount Waukesha College. He's a third-generation firefighter. He's a certified EMT and previously worked for Patriot Ambulance and also had fire experience with Shirley and Ashby Fire Departments. He joined our department November 24th, 2006, and was promoted to lieutenant on March 14th, 2016. He's currently the president of our Fitchburg Firefighters Relief Association, an active member of the Fitchburg High School Hall of Fame Committee. He worked at many civic events, including organizing the fire division of the Fourth of July Parade that he's done for many years, also works during the duck race in the river and the longio race setting up for the riders to give things for them at the central fire station like showers, toilet facilities. He's also on various committees and has volunteered his time for years for writing specifications on all our new pumpers, has traveled to Florida and Pennsylvania to spec out our trucks on his own time. He's written a couple of FEMA grants for us, one of them that was successful. He assisted Lieutenant Jack Gilmarten in getting us our heavy rescue truck. And he currently teaches across the state and is well-respected for his teaching in cancer awareness and prevention in the fire service. As you can see, I could go on and on, but PJ's dedicated to our department, his fellow firefighters, and most importantly, to the people of Fitchburg. We know he'll continue to be a great leader in our department and for our city.
I have a motion and second to accept the communication of His Honor, the Mayor, to appoint Lieutenant Patrick J. Roy to permanent fire captain. Speaking on the motion, Counselor Caddy.
PJ, congratulations. Chief. So, to see all these young guys coming up in ranks, it's great to see, but I've been to quite a few of these appointment committees. This is the most people I've ever seen.[441.56][441.56](Laughter) But I mean that, I really mean that in a good way, to see that you— there's so much support for these guys, and thank you. Thank you, Counselor.
Counselor Green.
PJ, I can't even express how proud I am of you and to this department, and it does make me feel a little old when I think about, you know, you—you know, the Roy boys coming down to the Deena Tally house. I don't want to say causing havoc.[472.78][472.78](Laughter) There's not much that's changed, but more importantly, I want you to know that I believe how proud your dad is of you. So, again, you have a very special place in my heart, and I look forward to you just continuing to lead with passion and be an excellent steward for our community.
Thank you, Counselor.
Counselor Deena Tally.
Wasn't a question of if he would become captain, but when. As early as, I want to say, seven years old, he was practically the fire chief at the fire station on Walbun's Court, where his brother Sean, cousin Tim, T., me, were all engines. Chief Roy was the head of the department and made sure that at six, seven, and eight years old, we knew how to write reports after major fires and ambulance one you had a problem with. But I learned more about firefighting without ever being in the academy from this guy. And, you know, I hope he's as easy on the—I hope he's easier on the guys than he was when we were kids back in the day. So, I want to congratulate you, and it's great to see you move up to this level. Well-deserved, well-earned, and it's a testament to everybody here tonight supporting you. So, when you think of PJ Roy, you think that he is Fitchburg. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Chief, I want to thank you once again for putting such qualified and just passionate individuals in front of us, and great to see this pipeline of talent and development come through your department. You know, the two individuals that you put before us for promotion, there's no one better in the city. So, and PJ, to the other fire captains in the room, please close your ears. There's no one more qualified. No, no, there's no one who loves this city more. So, thank you, thank you for all that you have done and all that you will do for our city, and certainly excited to have our newest full-time firefighter joining your ranks as well and having the opportunity to learn and be mentored by these two who are being promoted today. So, to all three, congratulations, and thank you for all that you do. That said, I have a motion and second. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? It is unanimous. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Madam Clerk, would you please conduct the swearing-in?
Absolutely. Please raise your right hand to repeat that for me to take it. I do solemnly promise and swear.
Solemnly promise and swear.
That I will faithfully and impartially.
Faithfully and impartially.
And to the best of my knowledge and ability.
And to the best of my knowledge and ability.
Perform and discharge all the duties.
Perform and discharge all the duties.
Incumb on me as a full-time firefighter.
Incumb on me as a full-time firefighter.
For the city of Fitchburg.
For the city of Fitchburg.
So help me God.
So help me God.
And to everyone in the audience, we'll give you off the time before we resume the meeting. Everyone will have a chance to get as many photos as they can. And to everyone in the audience, we'll give you off the time before we resume the meeting. Everyone will have a chance to get as many photos as they can. And to everyone in the audience, we'll give you off the time before we resume the meeting. Everyone will have a chance to get as many photos as they can. And to everyone in the audience, we'll give you off the time before we resume the meeting. Everyone will have a chance to get as many photos as they can. And to everyone in the audience, we'll give you off the time before we resume the meeting. Everyone will have a chance to get as many photos as they can. And to everyone in the audience, we'll give you off the time before we resume the meeting. Everyone will have a chance to get as many photos as they can. And to everyone in the audience, we'll give you off the time before we resume the meeting. Everyone will have a chance to get as many photos as they can. And to everyone in the audience, we'll give you off the time before we resume the meeting. Everyone will have a chance to get as many photos as they can. And to everyone in the audience, we'll give you off the time before we resume the meeting. Everyone will have a chance to get as many photos as they can. And to everyone in the audience, we'll give you off the time before we resume the meeting. Everyone will have a chance to get as many photos as they can. And to everyone in the audience, we'll give you off the time before we resume the meeting. You only get this once, so feel free to take as many photos as you need. Families, friends, please feel free to take this opportunity. You only get this once, so feel free to take as many photos as you need. Families, friends, please feel free to take this opportunity. You only get this once, so feel free to take as many photos as you need. Families, friends, please feel free to take this opportunity. You only get this once, so feel free to take as many photos as you need. Families, friends, please feel free to take this opportunity. You only get this once, so feel free to take as many photos as you need. Families, friends, please feel free to take this opportunity. You only get this once, so feel free to take as many photos as you need. Families, friends, please feel free to take this opportunity. You only get this once, so feel free to take as many photos as you need. Families, friends, please feel free to take this opportunity. You only get this once, so feel free to take as many photos as you need. Families, friends, please feel free to take this opportunity. You only get this once, so feel free to take as many photos as you need. Families, friends, please feel free to take this opportunity. You only get this once, so feel free to take as many photos as you need. Families, friends, please feel free to take this opportunity. You only get this once, so feel free to take as many photos as you need. Families, friends, please feel free to take this opportunity. You only get this once, so feel free to take as many photos as you need. Families, friends, please feel free to take this opportunity. You only get this once, so feel free to take as many photos as you need. Families, friends, please feel free to take this opportunity. You only get this once, so feel free to take as many photos as you need. Families, friends, please feel free to take this opportunity. You only get this once, so feel free to take as many photos as you need. Families, friends, please feel free to take this opportunity. You only get this once, so feel free to take as many photos as you need. Families, friends, please feel free to take this opportunity. You only get this once, so feel free to take as many photos as you need. Families, friends, please feel free to take this opportunity. You only get this once, so feel free to take as many photos as you need. Families, friends, please feel free to take this opportunity. You only get this once, so feel free to take as many photos as you need. Families, friends, please feel free to take this opportunity. You only get this once, so feel free to take as many photos as you need. Families, friends, please feel free to take this opportunity. You only get this once, so feel free to take as many photos as you need. Families, friends, please feel free to take this opportunity. You only get this once, so feel free to take as many photos as you need. Families, friends, please feel free to take this opportunity. You only get this once, so feel free to take as many photos as you need. Families, friends, please feel free to take this opportunity. You only get this once, so feel free to take as many photos as you need. Families, friends, please feel free to take this opportunity. You only get this once, so feel free to take as many photos as you need. Families, friends, please feel free to take this opportunity. You only get this once, so feel free to take as many photos as you need. Families, friends, please feel free to take this opportunity. You only get this once, so feel free to take as many photos as you need. Families, friends, please feel free to take this opportunity. You only get this once, so feel free to take as many photos as you need. Families, friends, please feel free to take this opportunity. You only get this once, so feel free to take as many photos as you need. Sounds good to me. I got the worst part over, having to speak in public. Counselors, we're gonna—we're gonna jump back in. You could walk briskly.
I think this is— this is clipped, though, so I'm just gonna read through this again just in case. So, this is great, though.
We'll now resume. This is an opportunity. We're now going to conduct the public forum for any other— I'm gonna give this one moment for folks to clear out. All right. At this time, we're gonna conduct a public forum for every other item on the agenda. At this time, anyone wishing to speak on any matter on the agenda may do so for not more than two minutes. If you are here addressing public hearing petitions, you'll have an opportunity to speak at that time. Please approach the center table and identify yourself by name and address for the record and the item number on the agenda which you are addressing. Does anyone wish to speak at this time?
Ward 5 polling place?
Yes, for any matter on the agenda. Feel free, come, sir. Come forward, sir. And if you could state your name and address for the record.
My name is Fred Hutchings, 27 Congress Street, and I'm in Ward 5B. I'm here to speak about the location of the Ward 5 polling place. We need to make the Ward 5 polling place at Rollstone on Main Street. Now, the city council wishes to reconsider its vote. At the city council meeting, various concerns were expressed. The promise was made to fix the shuttle bus. For two years, the city has tried to use a shuttle bus. I am skeptical about the shuttle bus. The shuttle bus was poorly advertised and closed down after one run. The city has said that it did its best that it can do to advertise the shuttle bus. I accept that. The shuttle bus has proven unreliable to be able to get the polling location to vote. I waited two hours for a shuttle bus that never came. It's not a practical solution to the problem of access. How many shuttle buses do we need before it becomes too expensive? It has been tried before, and it did not work. It is argued that the turnout has not changed. This totally disregards the facts of many of the city's poor, elderly, disabled, and people without cars cannot get there. For many of us without cars, it's very hard to get there. We believe that everyone should have the right to vote. Making the polling place so far away effectively takes that right away. Because of this distance, hundreds will not be able to vote. Just after this move happened, many disabled, elderly, people without cars are not able to reach the polling place. It was pointed out that many of the residents of Ward 5B do, in fact, walk. It was said that there are many disabled in other wards. What about them? What about them? Is it being said that if we help the poor and disabled in one ward, we'll have to help the poor and disabled in other wards? I hope we do help them. It was said that no matter what the city council does, some will be unhappy. So, we should make the poor, elderly, and disabled the unhappy ones. The issue of parking around Rollstone is not true. I agree with the counselors that listed the extensive parking both in and around Rollstone. It was said that the intersection at North Street and Main Street in Intermodal is the most dangerous intersection in the city. How long has this been going on? I have written to the mayor and the police chief saying that this needs to be fixed. I have heard nothing. It was—that crosswalks—I use that crosswalk several times per week. No one is really concerned about this intersection. If this were the case, the city would have done something about it long before. It seems like an excuse and not a reason. I love the thoughts expressed by Counselor Tom Donnelly in supporting the move to Main Street. He said that the city should be developing Main Street. In a long and passionate speech, he expressed the need—to use Main Street. Isn't that the one thing the city's council is trying to do, to expand the use of downtown? These remarks were met by loud applause from most of the audience. It was said that the city is doing things to develop Main Street. This is good. Does that mean that there's only so much the city can do to develop Main Street? It was said that the location of the polling place does not stimulate tourism. This misses the point. One criticism against moving a polling place to Main Street is the lack of access and the citizens' fear and dislike of going to Main Street. This is the point. If Fitchburg residents are afraid to go to Main Street, this in itself should concern the city council. The city council must answer these people's concerns about going to Main Street. It is said that moving the voting location causes voter confusion. This speaks very poorly of the voters of Fitchburg. They are going to the polls to choose the city leaders, only they don't know where they're going. We need to inform the city residents—
Sir.
—where these voting locations are.
Two minutes has expired. If you could provide your closing remark.
Yep, one paragraph, two sentences. Some have reacted strongly to the word voter suppression, so let me change the words. For many of us without cars, it's very hard to get there. We believe that everyone should have the right to vote. Making the polling place so far away effectively takes that right away. Because of this distance, hundreds will not be able to vote. Many disabled and people without cars are not able to reach the polling place. Call it what you will, the words don't help those who cannot make it to the polling place. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Is there anyone else wishing to speak at this time?
Hi, Bob Cooler. I live at 167 Blossom Street. Speaking to the moving of Ward 5 polling place from Sima Park to Rollstone Church. The gentleman that just spoke had some good points. However, there are people in all six wards that are not real affluent, that do not have cars, that do not have access to public transportation in order to get to their polling places. People in—the people in Ward 5B are wanting to make sure that their polling places move down on Main Street. If we're—if the city council is gonna move one polling place to accommodate however many people are in Ward 5B and move it to Main Street, why don't we just move all six polling places to Main Street? In my mind, that wouldn't make a lot of sense. I'm stressing to leave the Ward 5 polling place right where it is, just as the Ward 4 polling place where it is, Ward 1, Ward 2, Ward 3. Leave it where it is. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Good evening. My name's Laura Lyne McLaur. I live on 1 Redmond Place. I'm a Ward 5B resident. I would like to see the polling place at the Rollstone Congregational Church. I find it very difficult, one, to find Sima Park originally, two, to use any kind of transportation to get to Sima Park. As you can see, I'm one of those disabled people to get back and forth, whether it's getting into the building that's there. It's quote-unquote handicap accessible. You're walking over gravelled yard in a building, over a doorstop area. It's not very handicap accessible, even though it's quote-unquote handicap accessible. The shuttle buses don't work well when you talk to other people who have to use transportation in and out of that location. The downtown locations have worked. I have been a resident of Fitchburg for 30 years. The other polling places have all been easier to access. I understand, oh, yeah, you're only except helping the Ward 5B. It's not that case. This particular place for Ward 5 is just not— This particular place for Ward five is just not, Sima Park has been the worst, absolute worst place for the Ward five B vote. I mean, if you could find something else for us, that would be great. It's just like he, like the first gentleman spoke about, the handicap accessibility, the busing, the building itself just does not work when you're talking about the elderly, the transportation, finding the location, and any weather situation, whatever. So that is why I'm here to address you today, for somebody who has to deal with that location. Thank you.
Thank you.
Evening.
Evening. Okay. Dave Roth, 303 Tibbetts Circle, Ward six actually, also a member of the Human Rights Commission and the warden for five A. So the reason I'm here is because as the warden of five A, I'm the trouble table. I'm where people come when they have problems. And literally hundreds of people come to the table with concerns of why are we way out here? And I love Sima Park, but why are we way out here? Both the fact that it is a dirt road, dirt parking lot, muddy if it rains, which it seems to almost every election time. So my feeling is, as a warden who volunteers to help the elections so more people can vote and be a part of the process, I honestly think from what I've heard from others, that it would be much more convenient coming back downtown. It would be very close to where it was before, at the Intermodal Station before they put new offices in there. So I think it'd be more convenient that way. And yes, I have also heard from people that accessibility is a concern, as well as the fact that part of Ward five is the college community, which can definitely get to Rollstone easier too. And if we want them to participate in our community, that's also a, a positive of moving to Rollstone. So I think that that's something we need to listen to and to, that's why I'm here today. It was brought up that, well, what about the other wards that might be in inconvenient areas? I think that possibly is true. I live right down the road here and voted St. Bernard's. So someday, maybe that issue will come up. But I don't think, because other wards are also in inconvenient areas to people, we shouldn't fix this one if we can correct wrong. It's not that it was at Sima Park forever and we're asking to move downtown. It's only been there for a short time. And as I said, the complaints I get, being there for the 14 or 16 hours of Election Day every election, I hear it from many people. And this is my Chair of the Human Rights Commission.
Barbara Nealon. I live at 58 Gutter Street. I am the chairperson of the Human Rights Commission, and I believe, counselors, you've all received a letter from the Human Rights Commission asking you to reconsider moving the polling station from Sima Park. And I just, I wanna note for our residents in the city, the Pittsburgh Human Rights Commission is legally and ethically obligated to protect the human rights of all citizens, especially our most vulnerable populations, as well as support the city in its endeavor, endeavors. With that mission in mind, the Human Rights Commission is in support of the residents of Ward five securing a polling station on Main Street and/or downtown area and opposed to the Sima Park location. I want you to know, this is not one, two, or three individuals within this ward that has come forward to the Human Rights Commission. This has been multiple people calling us, following up with us. I mean, we, we are going out to places and they're saying, we've got an issue here, and they wanna be heard. So again, this is not one or two people that have issues. These are areas identified with Ward five already, such as distance and access. The Human Rights Commission is asking for your support in keeping both Ward A and B together. It's hard enough in these polling stations for me to remember, am I on A or B? So just imagine those people that have to be relocated to another area and have difficulty trying to find their, their place to vote. And honestly, if the residents of the city of Pittsburgh are not happy with their polling spot, it, this isn't about being happy about this spot and being able to travel. We're denying access to those people that wanna vote. Now, we have early registration, I hear that. That worked out really well this past election, but not everyone takes that opportunity to do that. So we wanna make sure that if the residents have issues, that you do bring them forward. It's not to complain about the city. We all wanna work together, and the Human Rights Commission is there with the city council trying to make sure our residents are safe, protected, and have equal access. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else wishing to speak at this time? Good evening.
I live at 81 Snow Street in Pittsburgh. I care very much about the right to vote. I think that people will fight harder for a need than they will fight for comfort and convenience. I care about the right to vote, not just for myself, but for my neighbors as well. You should not have to vote by absentee vote because your polling place is inaccessible. The right to vote is an important right. I believe that everyone, no matter who they are or where they live, has a right to vote. Voters who are elderly, disabled, or do not have cars will not be able to get to Sima Park to vote. I do not have confidence in shuttle buses. It is a very long walk from the bus line. A polling place should be accessible to anyone who wants to vote, no exceptions. If there is any question of what is the right thing to do, it is admirable to err on the side of justice and equity. The majority must stand for the minority and the marginalized. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else wishing to speak at this time? Seeing none, Mr. Skrowski.
Good evening, counselors. I'm here to speak on another matter, order number 136-19, with regard to the appropriation requested for the Twin City Rail Trail. I'm requesting a suspension of the rules, basically after conversations with folks at Mastod and internally, it just seems prudent to, if the council would allow it, move forward on this allocation as quickly as possible. But it basically would go towards, do you want me to explain it now, or?
Yes, please. So the, the idea is, the, the funding will go in part towards an appraiser who would
look at the 13 easements on 11 affected properties along Phase One of the rail trail, and then the remainder of that, it's about 8,700 for the appraiser, and then the remainder would go towards paying just compensation for the 13 easements along the trail. So we really need to get this tied up in an order by the end of August. I think originally, we had anticipated we had until the end of September.
Second.
I have a motion and second to suspend the rules on 136-19. All those in favor of suspending?
Aye.
All those opposed? It is unanimous. Motion carries. I have a motion and second to approve 136-19. Speaking on the motion, speaking on the motion, Counselor Bochum.
We're not talking about a lot of land taken, right?
No, the, the vast majority of them with one exception, which will actually be donated to us, there'll be short-term easements for construction.
Okay. That's it.
I have a motion and second to accept 136-19. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? It is unanimous. Motion carries. Thank you. Returning to the agenda, report from the Committee on Records. Counselor Donnelly.
We have reviewed the records. They appear to be in order.
Motion and second to accept the report from the Committee on Records. Speaking on the motion, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? It is unanimous. Motion carries. We have communication and a report from a department head from the Pittsburgh Retirement System regarding FY 2020 budget. Counselors, would you like this placed on?
Placed on file.
I have a motion and second to place it on file in the city clerk's office. Speaking on the motion, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? It is unanimous. And one other communication, independent augers report for year ending June 30, 2018.
That communication, you sent the Finance Committee.
I have a motion and second to send the other communication to the Finance Committee meeting. Speaking on the motion, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? It is unanimous. Motion carries. Committee reports. City Property Committee.
The City Property Committee met on April 23rd here at Memorial. We took up three petitions. The first, Counselor Amy Green on behalf of Martha Lancey, 389 South Street, to request that the city of Pittsburgh turn Colburn Street into a public way. That was given leave to withdraw pending some technical details that need to be worked out. 074-19, Counselor Amy Green on behalf of resident Janice Kenefick Perez, 11 Washington Street, to petition that the easement placed on 11 Washington Street be removed, subjecting it to the side yard sales program and deem it as surplus property. That was amended for clarification to reflect that the property is not currently in the side yard sales program. The petition now is to sell the easement owned by 40 Nashua Street, which is owned by the city, to Ms. Kenefick Perez, owner of 11 Washington Street, for the sum of $300. And lastly, 119-19, ordered that the director of, the executive director of Planning and Community Development has requested that the city exercise its power of eminent domain for the Twin City Rail Trail project as outlined in the enclosed order. That was recommended to be adopted.
Motion to accept the committee report.
I have a motion and second to accept the City Property Committee report. Speaking on the motion, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? It is unanimous. Motion carries. Finance Committee meeting, Counselor Dina Tally.
Thank you, Mr. President. Finance met on April 23rd, and very quickly, I'll go through each one. 113-19 was adopted for $18,972 as, as if you will, a transfer from year 43 mark, United Neighbors of Pittsburgh to year 44. 114-19 was adopted unanimously, appropriating $103,600 to the school department to cover insurance recoveries over $150,000 for Crocker Elementary. 115-19 was adopted, appropriating $1 million from available funds to the city's debt service, maturing debt for paying Long Show Roof Loan Off quicker. 116-19 to move $100,000 against available funds to the school department, capital improvements for abating asbestos in the basement of Long Show Middle School, in anticipation of replacing the main water pipe. And 117-19 appropriating $25,000 against available funds to information technology expenses, legal costs and expenses, which was basically part of the PEG grants that were incorrectly recorded in our budget for FY 19, so this was a clerical correction.
Motion to approve?
I have a motion and second to approve. Speaking on the motion, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? It is unanimous. Motion carries. Legislative Affairs Committee oral report, meeting of April 30th. Counselor Walsh.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Legislative Affairs Committee met on April 30th. There were three petitions in front of them. 103-19, the Honorable Mayor Stephen D. Natale authorized on behalf of the city of Pittsburgh to facilitate and execute the attached Community Host Benefit Agreement with the Hubcraft LLC located at 25 Newport Street in Pittsburgh, Mass. This was adopted with changes to the Community Host Agreement by removing the gift provision and adding a limitation for modifying the contract. Petition 105-19, the Honorable Mayor Stephen D. Natale has authorized on behalf of the city of Pittsburgh to facilitate and execute the attached Community Host Benefit Agreement with Fresh Connection Boston LLC for a non-medical marijuana cultivation and processing facility located at 175 Kimball Street, Pittsburgh, Mass. That was recommended to be adopted. And the third, 118-19, the Honorable Mayor Stephen D. Natale has authorized on behalf of the city of Pittsburgh to facilitate and execute the attached Community Host Benefit Agreement with the Eastern Airlines LLC for a marijuana, that was amended, hold on.
Cultivation facility?
Cultivation facility, thank you. Located at 431 Westminster Street, Pittsburgh, Massachusetts. It was amended to delete testing laboratory and replace with cultivation facility, and that was adopted as amended. The city solicitor appeared at that meeting and explained to the committee that the most recent host benefit agreements with Hubcraft LLC includes provisions that differ from the former host benefit agreements in that there is no gift provision. The reason for this change is that the Cannabis Control Commission has requested that the state legislature give them the authority to review the host benefit agreements and that the CCC has indicated in a non-legal, legal memorandum that the CCC does not like gift agreements. The host benefits agreement, the host benefit agreements do, however, now have limitations of one year to contest the amount of validity of any payment made under the agreement and to contest the validity of the agreement itself. The city of Pittsburgh has been at the forefront of the cannabis industry in terms of city ordinances, negotiations, negotiations with cannabis businesses and host benefit agreements, and the changes to the host benefit agreements are but one way to remain at the forefront in this regard.
Motion to approve?
Second.
I have a motion and second to approve the Legislative Affairs Committee report. Speaking on the motion, Counselor Bochum.
Mr. Chair, I was wondering, do you think that the city solicitor can get up and explain to the council that we're not present at the Judiciary Affairs, what the city is gonna lose in the gift and the donations to these different places, like the Clegg on Neighborhood Center and that? Can you do that, or no?
If you could speak broadly to what the, what the city stands for financially.
The city stands just financially?
Yes.
So the community host agreements were prepared originally with multiple irons in the fire, if you will. When we started the process, you might be aware that there was no statute, there was no, really not many host agreements out there in the Commonwealth. So one of the goals was to diversify the city's risks when we were contracting, and that, one of those tools was the community relations board giving. The CCC had issued a, a, I guess, not a legal opinion, which cited some authorities indicating their concerns with these types of gift requirements, if you will. They see this as requiring companies to sign agreements in exchange for promises to make a gift, and they don't feel that that is in fact a true gift. So we're gonna be moving away from that practice.
Okay. I just wanted the other council to be aware.
Counselor Green.
My question on that is, where it's listed as a statute limitation, when the original host agreements came before us, seems like way back in the day now, but that was going to be repetitive gifts over years for a certain amount of dollars that these companies were going to give us in exchange for allowing them to come in our, into our community, good, bad, or indifferent, with impacts, however you see fit. Have we limited the amount of time that we are going to collect these yearly gifts from each of these companies?
No, the statute does limit that to five years. So our agreements will allow that to run for five years and the opportunity to renegotiate what the impact fee is. The, the issue with the impact fee coming directly to the city is gonna be also normalized in the extent that the cultivation facilities are going to all have a standard fee as opposed to various different fees. They'll be at 1.25%, and that the retail companies are gonna be at 2.75%.
Is that from their gross sales?
Based on a definition of gross sales that we have contained in the contract.
Okay.
The, the point of the, the giving to third parties is, is not to underestimate the goodwill that we've generated with the, through the mayor's office with these companies as we've been citing the facilities. There is not one of the folks that we have reviewed that provision with that had indicated they have anything other than an intention to make a gift. So in your community host agreement format now, there will be a requirement of the, of the, of the community relations board. There will be a requirement that it be staffed with at least three folks from the city, and there will be a requirement that there be responses to requests. So in that way, I think that we're gonna be holding them to their word as to what they said that they were gonna do when we were contracting with them. I think the best way to go is to make this move to keep us competitive in the industry, to cite just the best businesses, and also avoid any negative reporting, which seems to currently have an industry slant, so.
Okay. Thank you.
I have a motion and second to accept the Legislative Affairs Committee report. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? It is unanimous. Motion carries. Public Works Committee report, Counselor Caddy.
Public Works Committee met on Intermodal. We had seven petitions. The first one, 123-19, David Duval of 100 Flula Street, Pittsburgh, to request that riding and repaving of Flula Street from Melrose Street to 100 Flula Street be completed along with repair of two storm drains as outlined in the enclosed petition, held in committee pending a new pavement condition index that we're supposed to get, I think, June 1st. 124-19, Counsel Fleming and Dina Tally to clean culverts abutting 429 High Rock Road that was granted. 125-19, Counselors Fleming, Dina Tally, on behalf of Joseph Novelli, to repair or remove a city-installed retaining wall at 400 and a city-installed retaining wall at 430 High Rock Road that was given leave to withdrawal that was determined that the wall is not on city property. 12619, Council Joel Caddy to correct the water problem at 15 Thurston Place, be held in committee until the problem can be observed during a rain event. 20918, multiple citizens to repair Metagod Stan and refill the pond and restore wildlife, wildlife population, that was held in committee again until the completion of an ongoing alternative analysis. 28618, Councilor Mercer Fleming to have the city place bales of hay at the top of High Rock Road where it meets the paper portion of High Rock Road. During heavy rain, the water runs down into the backyards of 1191 and 1179 National State Road, causing flooding and debris, that was held in committee. And last, 06519, Council Squallia and Caddy on behalf of Paul Agnesi to install a berm in front of his driveway, uh, located at 273 Teresa Street, um, to mitigate wash on, on the water runoff that was granted, granted as amended.
Move to accept the Public Works Committee report excluding 12519.
Second.
I have a motion and second to accept the Public Works Committee report excluding 12519. Speaking on the motion, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? It is unanimous. Motion carries.
Move 12519 to send back to Public Works.
I have a motion and second to send 12519, um, back to Public Works Committee. Speaking on the motion, Councilor Deenatali.
So I, I spoke with Mr. Novelli at length a few days ago, and I notified Gary Whittington and Lenny Laxo as to my communications, they were supposed to be speaking with him. Um, there is some information apparently that Mr. Laxo and Mr. Whittington were not privy to, that Mr. Novelli has with respect to evidence of why he believes it's a city wall. Um, and Lenny Laxo and Gary both told me on Thursday of last week that they will research the matter further because if what Mr. Novelli is saying is true and they have to confirm that, then it is in fact a city wall. So I'd like this to be sent back to committee and held until they figure out what's going on.
I have a motion and second to send back to the Public Works Committee meeting. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? It is unanimous. Motion carries. Recessed hearing, 02919, Pittsburgh Planning Board to amend the Pittsburgh zoning ordinance by amending the table of principal uses concerning, uh, medical offices and to further define, uh, different medical and, uh, medical office use per the vote of the Pittsburgh Planning Board on January 8th, 2019. I now declare the hearing resumed. Counselors, this was, um, uh, this was held, and, uh, yep, the, the board voted to continue their hearing until May 14th, so I'd ask that we continue this hearing to June 4th, 2019.
Second.
I have a motion and second to continue the hearing to June 4th, 2019. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? It is unanimous. Motion carries. Hearing is recessed until then. Resolution, 12819, resolution that the City of Pittsburgh hereby accepts the provisions of MGL Chapter 164, Section 134, and publicly declares its intent to become an aggregator of electric power on behalf of its residential and business electric customers as outlined in the resolution. Mister Kierigny.
Thank you, Mister Council President, and also, uh, thank you, Council President, for sponsoring this resolution. Uh, this is, uh, Mayor Deenatali is excited to share this, uh, with the council, and it was, uh, part of his previous state of the city and, and something that he hopes the, the residents of Pittsburgh will find attractive. Uh, municipal aggregation in its simplest form, uh, is, is to save the Pittsburgh residents' dollars on their electricity bill. Uh, this resolution authorizes the city to entertain municipal aggregation, and in this process, the municipality purchases electricity at a bulk rate from a competitive supplier on behalf of the residents and businesses within our city. In order to do so, the, the state and DOER has sent, set several steps that the city has to take in order to participate in this program. The first is a vote by your body for this resolution. Once the resolution is passed, the city will, um, uh, issue an RFP to, uh, get a, or procure a energy broker or aggregator, and they will work on our behalf, uh, in order to develop an aggregation plan, which will be submitted to DOER for approval. Uh, once that's approved, it is submitted to DPU for approval and sent back, uh, to the City of Pittsburgh, where your body gets to vote on the aggregation plan once again. Once that plan is, uh, approved by the, the city council, we'll issue an RFP to a competitive, uh, to, to the market for a competitive supplier, uh, to answer, uh, where hopefully, uh, we will be able to get a reduced rate in, uh, electricity supply to the residents. This is a, uh, option for residents to join or opt out. Um, there's not, there's no obligation that ties them into this. Um, they will, at any point during, during this process, or when, when the city, uh, does have municipal aggregation, uh, residents can opt in or out at any time. Um, there's no, there's no separate billing for, for residents. Uh, the, the essential, the, the very essence of this is that we, the city will have 40,000, roughly 40,000 residents, uh, which is our purchasing power to suppliers to give us the reduced rate. The rates are transparent and publicly posted. Approximately 150 communities in, in Massachusetts participate in this process. Uh, the closest right now is, uh, is the City of Gardner. Um, it would be a fixed price for a set amount of time as contracted out with the supplier, and, um, and that will be it. I'll be, take any questions that you may have, counselors.
Counselor Green.
Um, are we, do we have an obligation currently, or have we fulfilled that obligation with Unitil, um, owning the poles or the supplier fee? How, how are we going to work around that with, with aggregation?
Uh, good question, counselor. There's two, if you look at your electricity bill, there's two charges that Unitil provides. One is the, um, what's known as the delivery charge, which is what you're speaking of with the poles and the, and the, the lines, the, the real property, if you will, of Unitil's. The second is the electrical supply charge, and that's what municipal aggregation is talking about, is the, the actual supply of electricity rather than the prop, the real property that Unitil has to deliver electricity to your home. If that makes sense.
Well, it does, but...
So, so it's, that's a separate, that's a separate service that Unitil's providing us in terms of, uh, the energy or delivery charge. So the delivery charge for, for, uh, ratepayers at, at home are paying Unitil for the transmission of electric, electricity to their house. The supply charge that ratepayers are paying at home for, is for the electricity itself. This program allows us to get a better rate on electricity to, uh, for, for our residents.
As the supply, not the delivery.
As the supply, correct.
Okay. And, um, like we've heard before, you know, this doesn't affect me one way or another because we have solar, so I don't have to deal with Unitil at all.
Sure.
But over time, what we've seen happen is that we lock in, lock in at a certain rate, which is a significant savings over Unitil. But then, um, you know, as your term kind of expires on your contract, the rate creeps up and up and up, and before long, now we potentially may be paying even more, if that would even be possible, um, than what Unitil charges. So I want to know what safeguards we have in place, and I know this is the beginning, I'm all for this, but I, I want us to be mindful and forward-thinking that nobody's going to go without paying.
Correct.
Pay now, pay later, pay Unitil, pay another company. Everybody's going to get paid.
That's correct. So, counselor, there's, um, a couple of safeguards to address your concern. The first is the fixed rate that the supply that, that we will be able to procure from a supplier is for an, uh, a set period amount of time. And once that time expires, we can go, then go back out to bid for a, a new supply charge. That's the first. The second is that any resident, if the resident's starting to notice rates increasing, if it's starting to level out as the same rate as Unitil will provide, or if it, if it does in the small chance exceed the rate that Unitil provides, they have an option to opt out, go back into the Unitil supply rate and, uh, and see that savings, if you will.
How will we go about, um, because one of the largest problems that Unitil faces now is approximately one-third of our population doesn't, they do not pay their electric bill. So Unitil is, uh, you know, turning power off or forever trying to locate families that, you know, continue to be transient in our city in different addresses. Um, how will, or who's the company that's going to be in charge of seeking out those people that aren't paying us now, the city, their electric bill?
Uh, so, uh, a point of clarification, the city will not be collecting any sort of electricity, electricity fees, none whatsoever. The only, the only action the city is taking is the procurement of a supplier to deliver or to provide electricity. So the supplier will be collecting the fees for the use of electricity, not the city.
Okay, so it'll be their responsibility to go after the repeat offenders?
Any, any offender or not, any and all collection of electricity fees is done by the supplier.
Okay. Thank you.
Counselor Bochman.
A few years ago, I recall right, the Council, Donnelly, he was on the councilman, there was a company that came in that wanted to do the exact same thing that you wanted to do, what the city wants to do. And the way I understand it, no matter how you look at it, you're going to pay Unitil. Or you may get a couple pennies saving on the electricity, but you're going to pay the transmission charge and all the distribution charge too, the way I understand it. And the way I understood it the last time, when we had it, was when they said it to the, to the council as a whole, they, not this company, they said that you had to take the electricity for a certain period of time, I think it was for six months. So you're telling me, you're telling the people here in this council that I can join you tomorrow and 30 days later I can hop out, and then 30 days later I can hop back in?
For the municipal aggregation, for the first, when they, when they set the timeline, when the supplier sets the timeline, it's procured, and then they're starting to notify a public, and let me, let me be very clear, there's also a public education piece of this entire project. The supplier or the broker will come in and do a presentation to this council, and again, there's another opportunity for you guys to vote on it. There will be some sort of timeline. I don't know if it's six months, this is all part of the RFP process. If it's six months, six weeks, three weeks, two weeks, where a constituent or the, the person, uh, the resident at home or whoever is purchasing this power will have to opt into it. Now, the rate is fixed, so that they're buying at that fixed rate, so they know where the rate is and where Unitil's rate is. The only time where, if, if in your scenario, Unitil drops their rate enough that they're, the constituent and the resident would be losing, uh, dollars or be paying more in the electricity supply. But that would only be for the very beginning, and that is, that will be part of the RFP process of how long that, the first opt-in is going to take, if it's two, three, six weeks. Regardless, they will understand what the rates are, they can make an educated, uh, determination of how they're going to purchase their power and move on. After that timeline, they'll be able to opt out, and all that will be spelled out for the, for the resident before they purchase the power.
Well, the reason why I'm asking this question, could, uh, a few, well, a couple of years ago, people were going around knocking on doors saying, sign up, I think it was Clearwater? I think it was Clearwater, something like Clear something, because I signed up for cheaper rates, and they told me that I had to keep on it for a period of time. It wasn't allowable that I could jump out 30 days, it was, I think it was six months, six months to the day. And then I got, I have never dropped out because I don't pay, I got Unitil on my, my hospital, on my apartment, I got that company because I wanted to see, but I didn't, I, I don't notice that big of a difference, because, because I'm still paying Unitil for the transmission cost to supply the wires and everything else, because the savings, and I'm not going to say that, is only a couple pennies. If you're telling me I can save $100, all right, but, you know, it's going to be only a couple pennies. I don't want people to get the idea that we're going to save hundreds of thousands of dollars, because I don't know, I mean, I find it very skeptical.
Sure. If I may, in the, in the words of Representative Hay, um, when, when any fee or, or fine went before your board to be raised, he always made it, made it clear that 10, we can say it's just $10 more or $10 saved, but it's still $10 to a family that could use it. So, uh, in, in Gardner's situation, they're saving roughly or approximately between $11 and $12 a month. That goes over a course of time, $100, $120 a year, uh, in terms of total savings. Is it an absolute answer to, about the Unitil's cost for the City of Pittsburgh? Absolutely not. Is it a, is it certainly a means to, to a family that can help reduce costs at, at home? Yes, it is.
All right.
And, and counselor, to address some of your concerns, as well as this, this body is that, you know, this is, this is simply a resolution. We're, we're putting, we're, we're giving the approval of the concept and the idea to move forward and asking then this administration to move forward with an RFP process, to at least start doing some of that work, to then put an RFP out, to send it to the state level, and then it comes back to us. And that's when we really get to dive into the details and every aspect of how, what, why, when, how much. Um, so, this is simply approving the concept and, and permitting the administration to move forward, um, with further exploration, uh, in an RFP process, and if it doesn't, um, uh, if it doesn't meet those requirements, it may not even come back in front of us if it doesn't, uh, meet the merits of, uh, both the state agency or the, um, or this city. Uh, that said, Counselor Squallia.
Just to compare Gardner, at the end of 2017, when it was, uh, getting, when it was very cold, the, the state of Massachusetts was, uh, experiencing increases in energy prices, and Mayor Hawke of Gardner advertised that Gardner residents would be paying 20% or were getting a 20% decrease in their electric bill, uh, due to their municipal aggregation. Um, I just have a question on, uh, on two questions. Uh, one question on the timeline, what would you expect the timeline is from this vote today to coming back to us and sending the RFP for a competitive supplier and residents opting in and actually seeing a savings on their electric bills, hopefully?
According to the, uh, the timeline that's provided to me through, through the state and laying out all the steps, uh, it will take about approximately six months before we come back to the, to the city council, uh, for a, a vote to approve the plan, and then approximately another six, six to eight months of, uh, further bidding and then the supply itself.
So approximately a year or so from now? Okay, great. And the second question is, who monitors and reports on our energy savings or our, um, costs of the, the program? Who, who's monitoring our aggregation rates, how much the city's saving?
Supplier would be. So that we're purchasing the, we would be purchasing the power from the supplier, the supplier would be providing the fixed rate, they would be seeing what, I, I believe the aggregate savings that you're speaking of is, is provided by the supplier.
Subject to the DPU approval.
Correct. So, right, this is, this is at the end game. This is at the end game of, of the, this is assuming we've contracted and we're, we're purchasing power from the supplier.
So we, we can expect to get reports, um, from the supplier saying, you've saved such amount of dollars, the current rate is this, you're paying this?
Yes, and then residents will be able to see that as well, based off of their, their billing, what they're contracting for, uh, with the supplier as well. So all that information will be available. Quite frankly, it is right now with, on DOER's website, with all the other municipalities and towns that have participated in this program.
Thank you.
Counselor Zarella.
I just want to say this sounds like a very intriguing program. I'm glad we're looking into it, because it really does sound like an, as, as close to a no-lose situation as you can ever have in, uh, in politics and law. Even if we save only a few pennies, that's a few pennies per kilowatt hour, that adds up over time. And the way I'm understanding it, there's literally no chance of losing money by opting in unless you make a bad choice to begin with, which no one's going to do. No one's going to opt in if they see that the rate is higher than what they're paying. Um, other than that, though, the only way you lose money is if Unitil's rate drops sharply. And when does that happen? So I think this is a, a good deal for the city if we can make it work.
Counselor Deenatali.
What's that?
Counselor Donnelly.
Thank you. I think that, um, it sounds like a real no-brainer, but I think we should be very cautious. Um, you're talking some of the big mills when they're, they have $50,000 a month bills. And the redevelopment authority has been doing this for a number of years. If you don't watch, you just said, who's going, who's going to do the monitoring? If you don't watch the bill, you're going to be in trouble real fast. And I don't, I heard what Counselor Squallia said about a 20% saving. It may be 20% on your energy. That doesn't mean it's going to be 20% of your bill. And if you don't really pay attention... And if you don't really pay attention very closely, it's like the wolf guarding the chicken coop. I mean, if they're the ones that are doing the monitoring, and you're not monitoring your bill, and you're not, not monitoring the whole bill, if you want to have an interesting conversation, talk to Tom Sosik, who's been doing the monitoring of the bills. If Unitil sends a bill out, you know, from the, they, they don't go from the first to the 30th, some of the second to the fourth, and some of the, from the fifth to the eighth, and this company will be doing it other times. It's extremely difficult to monitor. So, you'd have to have some sort of expertise, and, you know, you're dealing with .000, some of these, these numbers. Monitoring is going to be the most difficult thing. And if you buy at the right time, you save. But all the companies are trying to buy at the lowest rates that they can also. So, if you buy at the wrong time, and you're locked in, there will be no savings. So, I would call it a complicated issue, be very, very cautious, I certainly support investigating. Thank you.
I have, do I have a motion? I have a motion and second to adopt 12819. Speaking on the motion, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? It is unanimous, motion carries.
Counselors.
Motion to send 12919 through 13519 to finance, and with that, amending 13519 to read $13,290 instead of $12,290.
Second.
I have a motion and second to send 129 up to, including 13519 to the Finance Committee, and amending 13519 to reflect a, an amendment from $12,290 to $13,390, uh, $290. I have a motion and second, speaking on the motion, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? One in opposition, motion carries. Orders, other?
Move 13719 be adopted.
Second.
Under suspension of the rules.
Oh, actually...
You did that.
Yeah, move for suspension on 13719.
Motion and second for suspension of the rules on 13719, ordered that, whereas City Council Property Committee is anticipated to report their approval of the conveyance of the attached easement submitted to the city through petition 07419, whereas the grantee reports that at this time, that time is of the essence, and that the condition of the property is unsafe now, therefore, it is ordered that the city of Fitchburg shall, through its mayor, Stephen Aldina Tally, approve and authorize the execution and delivery of a release deed in form substantially similar to that attached hereto, and to authorize all other documents which will be necessary, helpful, or convenient thereto regarding 11 Washington Street. I have a motion and second for suspension, speaking on the motion, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed?
Second.
I have a motion and second to grant 13719, speaking on the motion, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? It is unanimous, motion carries. Ordinance is 13819, an ordinance to amend Chapter 14, Article 1, Section 14-2G of the City Code by striking the words "the chief assessor" and asserting the words "an assessor" in their place as outlined in the enclosed ordinance, reference petition 24319, first reading.
Move 13819 be sent to its first reading.
Second.
I have a motion and second to send 13819 to its first reading, speaking on the motion, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? It is unanimous, motion carries.
Move 12019 and 12119 be sent to that third and final reading.
Second.
I have a motion and second to send 120 and 12119 to their final reading, enrolled, ordained, and advertised, speaking on the motion, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? One in opposition, Counselor Boishman, motion carries by a margin of 10 to 1. Next motion to reconsider, Counselor Anthony Zarella, regarding the vote to be reconsidered is as follows. Motion to designate Rollstone Congregational Church as the Ward 5 polling site passed by a vote of seven in favor, Kusmerick, Donnelly, Green, Clark, Caddy, Zarella, and Boishman, and four opposed, DiNatali, Fleming, Squalia, and Walsh, which was taken on the following petition, 07519, Anna M. Farrell, City Clerk, to discuss the options and vote to designate the Ward 5A and 5B polling locations. Allow Counselor Zarella, as this is his motion, to speak to it.
Well, first I'll make the motion formally to reconsider as, as listed.
Second.
There is a second to the motion, speaking on that motion, Counselor Zarella.
So, I just, some of this, if you, if anyone has read some of the things I've put out to constituents, you may have heard this already, but I just want to explain, this is not an attempt on my part to take a second shot at the vote. I think that is generally inappropriate, and would slow the council down immeasurably if we tried that every time someone didn't like the way a vote turned out. The reason I put this motion forward is because of the particular manner that the previous vote turned out. We initially had a five to six vote against remaining at Sima. Then we had a seven to four vote to move to Rollstone, but two of those seven were myself and Counselor Green, both of whom switched our vote essentially out of courtesy, having seen that our preferred option had already been voted down. If we had both voted our initial inclination, we would have had a five to six vote against Sima, followed by a five to six vote against Rollstone. And I am aware that one of my colleagues, Counselor Squalia's, preferred option was to split the precincts, which I respect her absolute right to have, to hold that opinion and to vote for it, but the practical effect was that we had a vote of five to five to one. There was no majority actually recorded in favor of either of the two proposed locations. I feel that because this has generated so much controversy, it's important that whatever option we ultimately go with have a clear, at least six-vote majority, not counting any courtesy votes. That is the sole reason for raising this, this evening. I also want to note again that I know this has been very contentious, I understand there's a lot of passion on both sides, but we need to be civil about this. We can't have people either insinuating or outright stating, in some cases, that people who pick one side or the other are whatever, racists, bigots, insensitive, out of touch. That's not what this is about. Every person at this table cares about making sure people can vote. We just have different opinions on what the best way to ensure that in Ward 5 is. And accordingly, since we've already debated the merits of this issue, I am going to suggest and move that we limit debate on this motion to three minutes per floor time for each counselor, solely so that we don't get into rehashing everything that has already been discussed. And in the spirit of that, I'm not going to reiterate any of the points I may have in favor of my preferred position, which is to remain at Sima. I'm just going to put that motion forward to limit debate to three minutes per counselor.
I'll second that.
I have a motion and a second to limiting debate, limiting debate to three minutes. Speaking on the motion to, to that, that specific rule for this particular matter, Counselor DiNatali.
I'm against the three-minute ruling. I'm more in favor of having everybody who wants to speak have one bite at the apple, and that's it. Because some of us may have prepared statements tonight, some of us may have come in with wanting to say some things, three minutes would maybe not be enough, but I am all for limiting everybody's participation to one crack at this, instead of a time limit.
Counselor, I'm partial to either option. I think we've, we've discussed this ad nauseam, and, you know, unless there's new relevant points to bring up, and certainly counselors should have that opportunity if they've either changed their opinion or to present something new, but I would hate for us to rehash the same arg, the same debate that we've had two weeks ago. That said, Counselor Zarella.
If that is the preferred option of the majority of my colleagues, then with the consent of the council, I would be willing to amend my motion to that rule instead.
Would you like to rescind your initial motion and make that in its place?
Yes, move that we limit debate to one holding of the floor per counselor for unlimited time period.
Second.
I have a motion and second to limit debate to one speaking attempt per counselor. Speaking on the motion, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those in opposition? Four in opposition, Counselors Squalia, Clark, Caddy, and Boishman in opposition. Oh, I apologize, and Counselor Donnelly, five in opposition, the motion carries, six to five.
Actually, I hate to do it against my own motion, but it actually does require a two-thirds majority.
Two-thirds majority, then the motion fails. Thank you, Counselor Zarella.
Move to reconsider. Move, move the question.
I have a, I have a motion and second for reconsideration on the matter. All those in favor of reconsidering the matter, please raise your hand. One, two, three, four, five, six in favor of reconsidering. Counselor Clark, are you not in favor of reconsideration?
Throughout the entire process, I've been for the move to Rollstone. I want to continue that.
Okay. So, those in favor of reconsideration, please raise your hand. One, two, three, four, five. Those opposed, please raise your hand. In opposition to reconsideration, Counselors Squalia, Donnelly, Kusmerick, Boishman, Caddy, Clark, that's six. Against reconsideration, the motion fails to carry.
Move that petitions 13919 through 134119 be sent to their respective committees.
I have a motion and second to send 139 up to and including 14119 to their respective committees. Speaking on the motion, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? It is unanimous, motion carries. Announcements, the next two Saturdays, they'll be holding Ward cleanups. The next is Ward 2 and 3. Counselor Boishman, where is, where is your Ward cleanup being, being held?
I was just going to say that with my...
I, I realized I was stealing your, your spot, and I...
Well, I went to Walden Church, so I already said it there, too. But we're going to have a cleanup of Ward 2 and Ward 3, Joe Caddys, and I'm hoping that we get a big turnout to help us clean up the city, being in Lower Cleagon. We're all going to meet there at 8:00. I believe that the Salvation Army truck will be there to give us hot dogs, drinks, and whatever, we have popcorn chips, and it'll be quite fun, I can honestly tell you. Oh, Dan, down by the, yeah, the Neighborhood Center. So, it'll be quite interesting, quite fun. I know the council on my right here will be with me hand in hand on the banks, because I'll be Kimbo Street.
I will actually be at a graduation.
Oh, anything did not work with me.
And the following Saturday, on Saturday, May 18th, Ward 4 and 5 will conduct their Ward cleanups. The meeting location will be on High Street, the High Street parking lot for Long's Joe School. Also of note, that, that same day, on the 18th, Fitchburg State University will hold its undergraduate commencement ceremony.
One more question.
Counselor Squalia.
There is also on May 18th and 19th, a Fitchburg Citywide Yard Sale. It's the third annual springtime city yard, citywide yard sale, that is, yard sale that you hold at your house, and we are also having our community location at the Lunenburg Boys and Girls Club. So, you can go to fitchburgyardsale.com to see the map, and go to the different yard sale locations, or email fitchburgyardsale@gmail.com to be included on the map.
And Counselor Boishman.
And while we're getting to the basic fundamentals here, I'd like to wish everybody that's a mother, Happy Mother's Day weekend, and to the council, too. So, Happy Mother's Day.
Nicely said, Counselor Boishman. I have a motion and second to adjourn. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? We adjourned, thank you, counselors.
Thank you. Thank you, gentlemen.